Good morning and welcome to our Paul County Board of Commissioners October 28th Work Session. We will welcome all our invited guests and elected officials. I'm trying to see if we have any. So, thank you all for being here. I'll dispense with a reading of the, oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Iron. You were being blocked from my view. So, thank you very much for being here. I think Delmar's back. So, thank you for being here. Remind you to turn off all cell phones. Next to us is a pager that they do interrupt our production. The marshals brought forth the sheet and nobody signed up to speak today. So, at this time for our invocation and pledge, Pastor Johnny McMorris with the Shallow Missionary and Baptist Church. Listen very carefully because when he speaks it goes straight into God's ear. Would you stand with me if you're able?
Let us pray. Our Father and our God, as we come again into your holy presence, give you thanks for the many blessings we enjoy. Lord God, as we assemble here this day, we ask your grace and mercy to be in this place and everything be done decent and in order. Lord God, we pray now for those who have served this country well. We pray for our veterans. We pray for those, Lord God, who are in right now, our police officers, our sheriff's officers, that you would give them protection, protect their families in their absence. Then, Lord, we pray for this great country, America. We need your guidance from the White House, every state house, every municipality. We need you, Lord God. We remind you of your promise if my people who are called by my name will humble themselves and pray. We pray for a spirit of humility that we may hear your voice and we may change some of the ways. We love you, Lord. We bless you. It's in the wonderful name of him that loved us we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend McMorris. Minutes, the October 14th, 2014 Work Session Minutes and the October 14th, 2014 Board Meeting Minutes are available for you every time. You don't have to take them out. It's okay. I've been in church. Now, the Board of Commissioners would like to present Commander Walt Kurt Swinson, Chapter 576 Military Order of the Purple Heart and Commander Grady Hayes, American Legion 111, with a proclamation designating Pauling County as a Purple Heart County. Would you guys and Grady, would y'all come forth and stand up here in front? We're honored to have you with us today. I've got a proclamation to read, but before I read that, I will let you know that the Military Order of the Purple Heart was chartered by Congress in 1932 to protect and promote the mutual interest of Purple Heart recipients. The Military Order of the Purple Heart is composed of military men and women who received the Purple Heart Medal for wounds suffered in combat. Although their membership is restricted to the combat wounded, they support all veterans and their families with a wide array of nationwide programs by chapters and national service. The mission of the Military Order of Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill, camaraderie among combat wounded veterans, promote patriotism, support necessary legislative initiatives, and most importantly, provide service to all veterans and their families. Now, I'll read with you the proclamation. I'll present this to you. Purple Heart County, whereas the people of Pauling County have great admiration and utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selfishly served their country and this community in the armed forces, and whereas the veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, whereas the contributions and sacrifices of men and women from Pauling County who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas many men and women in uniform have given their lives while serving in the armed forces, and whereas on April 26th, 2014, Governor Nathan Dale, FISU designated August 7th, 2014, as Purple Heart Day in Georgia to remember and recognize veterans who were recipients of the Purple Heart Medal. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, David A. Austin, Chairman of the Pauling County Board of Commissioners, on October the 28th, 2014, do hereby proclaim Pauling County as a Purple Heart County honoring the service and sacrifices of our nation's men and women in uniform, wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans. Would y'all stand with me at all?
Can we do a picture first?
Okay, let's do a picture first and then. I'd just like to say, on behalf of the members of the council, I'd like to thank Pauling County and the Division for this honor and thank y'all very much.
To the Commissioners and members of the council, I'd like to say thank you on behalf of myself and behalf of the members of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, this brings Pauling County along with 76 other cities and counties throughout the state of Georgia that have become Purple Heart cities. We thank you very much for this prestigious position. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, I'm Martin Garner, Commander, Chapter 525, Rome. Just a few words, I'm proud to be here in historic Pauling County. Pauling County was formed on 3 December, 1832, with land taken from Cherokee County. Pauling County is named for John Paulden, who was born 16 October, 1758. He was famous for the capture of British by Major John Hendry in 1780, who was carrying secret messages from Benedict Arnold. Pauling County is a proud county and a growing county. It is now the realest, fastest-growing county in the country. We're proud to be here and we're proud that you've acted proclamation to honor our brothers and our sisters who were born and fought to keep our country free. Thank you.
We would ask y'all to stay over today. There is a lunch in the park. They have vendors out there, some of them do, some people in brown bag, employees will be out there and appreciate you. Michael, you want to add to that announcement? I believe you have somebody performing at lunch out there also?
Yes, sir. Good morning, thank you. As the chairman mentioned, today from 12 to 1, a little lunchtime concert. There are a couple of food vendors there. Mr. Jerome Olds, he's a contemporary Christian artist that's local to the area. I'm very fortunate to have him there. Very talented and I'm sure he'll enjoy it if you come. Have a few tables and chairs out there if you've got one, bring it and enjoy a free lunch time.
Perfect, thank you, sir. Thank you all. At this time, the Board of Commissioners would like to present Amber Aitken, Communications Officer, Pauling County, E-911, to the Public Safety Appreciation Award. Would you please step forward a few?
Amber's family is here with her and I believe one of her children.
If y'all are with Amber, any of the family, if y'all come up, that'd be great. She doesn't feel so alone. And we love screaming babies, I got plenty of them.
It's my honor and privilege to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award this month to Communications Officer Amber Aitken. Amber has been employed with the 911 Center since October 30th, 2013, and is approaching her one-year anniversary. She's an excellent employee and takes her job very seriously and has made outstanding progress in her training. Her excellence in training played a major role in her ability to handle an extremely stressful call received earlier this year, which is part of the reason for the award today. On May 7th of 2014, Amber was working at the comp taker when she answered a 911 call and found herself with just over six months of experience taking a call that most veteran communications officers have never experienced. The caller was reporting that her husband was in another room and was threatening to commit suicide and had asked her to leave, to leave the room and leave him by himself and she had seen him with a gun. And so, she left the room and went to call 911 for help and Amber happened to be the one to get the call on the other end. Amber remained calm and she relied on her training throughout the call to get the information needed to get the caller for dispatch. We recognize that our first responders, by our law enforcement EMS, are the first ones on the scene of most of our emergencies. This was a prime example of 911 communication officer being the first one on the scene via the telephone call. Unfortunately, while Amber was on the telephone with the caller, her husband did complete the suicide threat. She remained on the phone with the caller, trying to keep her calm and keeping her out of the room until the responders could arrive on the scene. And despite this extremely challenging call, Amber was able to gather all the information that was needed to dispatch our responders safely in about 20 seconds, which did a really good job considering the circumstances she was taking the information under. During the time that she was on the telephone with the caller, Amber remained calm and collected and she displayed the highest level of professionalism and handled the call like a veteran communications officer. Amber is now training on law enforcement dispatch and she has a very strong work ethic and always strives to improve her performance while ensuring the safety of the callers and the responders. She is well liked by her fellow employees and has become a very valuable part of our team. If you would join me, congratulations.
You can go down on this end, David. You can go down. Great folks in Fort Kearney County, thank you for the sacrifices y'all make and I believe y'all headed to the Capitol today, so thank you, be careful. On a sad occasion, I just received yesterday a resignation letter from Chuck Rand that he will be leaving to go into private engineering practice and his last day will be November 10th. So, sad to lose such a dedicated person, but we understand people need to move on with their lives. So, I'd say thanks a lot to Chuck Rand for his dedicated service. I watch the man work and he puts in about 12 to 15 to 17 hour days, so very, very dedicated. And we're really sorry to lose him. There are no invited guests, no bid awards, reports from committees and departments. Dean for Holden with elections, understanding you might be getting some records with early voters.
Thank you for the opportunity to come to speak this morning. Just going to give you some numbers that we are looking at right now. First, I want to let you know I have four of my board members here, which I'm very pleased to have with me. I have Peggy Wills, who is our chairman.
Y'all stand.
Beside her, I have Ms. Sue McCreary, she's one of our newer board members. Bill McFadden, who is our co-chairman, and Ms. Bobby Lee, who is a member. They will probably tell you about work since the day I've had over the past two weeks, but they're doing a great job and I appreciate their service to our county.
Thank you all for being here.
As of October 6th, which was the registration deadline, we are surveying 86,884 voters in Pauling County. We have 76,054 active voters and that is the number that we base our turnout percentages on. We started early voting on October the 13th. As of close of business on Saturday, we had Saturday voting and we voted 392 individuals that day. But as of close of business on Saturday, we have voted 5,811 voters. Yesterday, we opened our satellite locations, which includes Burn Hickory Park, Mount Tabor Park, Hopper Springs Baptist Church, and of course, voting is still going on in the election office. At the close of business yesterday, our vote total is 7,235. I'm very pleased to report that yesterday we voted 1,424 voters countywide. We are very excited to see the turnout that we are seeing. If you look back to the 2010 midterm elections, I'm going to give you a little bit of history on that compared to this election. Countywide, we saw a 46% turnout in 2010 and that was a historical number. There was 9,994 early votes cast in 2010. I believe that by Friday at 5:00, we will exceed that number. I hope that we see between 11,000 and 12,000 early votes cast in this election. I want everyone in this room, when you come in contact with somebody this week, ask them if they have voted. If not, send them to one of those locations. Absentee ballots continue to be mailed out. As of close of business yesterday, we have mailed out 1,896 ballots. We have received back end 1,143 voted ballots. We are surveying voters in Pauling County all over the country and all over the world. We have several ballots that have gone out to our military voters and we are very, very fortunate to be a state that allows our military to be able to get their ballot and vote. We will start early tabulation this year at 4:00 on Election Day because it does take a while to run all of those ballots through the optical scan. And we want the process to go smoothly. We have our vote review panel in place. We have representation from our Democratic Party and our Republican Party that will be there to serve as the vote review panel. These individuals are sequestered from 4:00 to 7:00 because they are actually seeing how the people of this county have voted. Lastly, I would like to report this that I was very, very pleased with. The voters have been so very excited, pleased and satisfied that they have not had to go through the security screening. There have been, and I'm going to stress this, zero, zero complaints from our voters. We always keep a log of issues and concerns our voters have and we have had zero. And that makes me a very, very happy election supervisor. I want to thank Commissioner Austin, County Administrator Mike Jones, and Major Lynn Hall for working to make this happen. The marshals here and staff has been wonderful to us. I think they've made some big friends, but they've been great. But y'all have supported us through this process and it has been probably the best election that I've ever conducted. I find it just very flattering to get to be able to be here today with these gentlemen who have fought for our freedom to vote and I want you to know I appreciate that. So, in closing, I want to share one of my favorite quotes from Franklin Roosevelt and I want you to think about this and it says, "Nobody will ever deprive the American people of the right to vote except the American people themselves and the only way they can do this is by not voting." Please get out and vote. I expect to see all of you in this room that have not voted in my office. The line's not that bad. We'll get you in and out in five to 10 minutes at the max, but please come and vote because these guys right here fought for that right and we should always practice that. Y'all, any questions? Any questions for you guys?
What are your early and vote often, right?
There you go.
What are your, what are your times, what are your times this week?
Okay, Monday, Wednesday and Friday at all locations, 8:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Tuesday and Thursday, 8:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m.
And the satellite locations only go through Friday?
Yes, that will be the last day to vote early and it's also the last day that you can get an absentee ballot mailed to you. Because Friday, we do the upload of all the voters in the county and we will be rocking and rolling on Tuesday for election day.
You did a great job, you did. Thank you. Andrew, go ahead and forward. As I mentioned earlier, there are no public participation on agenda items today. No consent agenda, no old business under new business. Public hearing on the abandoned Marrow Road, AKA County Road 938. I will open up this public hearing and Scott, do you have anything to say?
Just briefly, yes, we are asking for consideration to abandon our road road today. The road is serving one family directly and this is the family that has contacted us with interest in banning the road so they can better control access to this large track, the large track they own. There are three parcels involved. They do not, the other two parcels are not directly served by the road. Ask you to consider that theory.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, the public hearing is open and we're waiting for comments. Looking to see that no one is in opposition to this, I close this public hearing. Maybe a record for a public hearing. Number two, discuss action to adopt Resolution 14-31, funding County Road known as Marrow Road, AKA County Road 938. Any discussion on this issue? This is in whose post?
It's mine.
Sorry, what's the, what's the, no, no problems, no problems, Scott's DOT handled everything well and everybody's in agreement. That doesn't have much. Number three, discuss action to adopt Resolution 14-32, authorizing the Pauling County Industrial Building Authority to issue bonds to finance a senior living community located in Dallas, Georgia. We have Jason, if you will talk, Jim Woodburn, if you'll come forward, and Skip Dupree, if you'll be here. Jason, you want to open the subject?
Sure. Commissioners and ladies and gentlemen, this is a bond that is different than our usual bond that is seen in front of y'all. This is a private activity bond. His county will incur no debt as a result of it. I will defer to Mr. Woodburn and Mr. Dupree on the details of the project, but let me, I do want to bring to y'all's attention one provision in the bond resolution, which I think simply sets forth your role in this.
Oh.
Let me also add, when I started this job up here, I didn't need these. It's been a while, so I need these now. Now therefore be resolved and is hereby resolved by the Pauling County Board of Commissioners as follows, for the sole purpose of qualifying the interest on the bonds for exclusion from the gross income of the owners thereof for federal income tax purposes pursuant to applicable provisions of the code, that's the Internal Revenue Code, the issuance of bonds by the authority in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $8.5 million and acquisition, construction, installation, furnishing and equipping of the project with the proceeds of the bond is approved. And this is the most important sentence here. This approval is given solely for the purpose of compliance with the provisions of the code and in no event shall this approval constitute any obligation on the part of the county with respect to the bonds. I'll defer to Mr. Woodburn and Mr. Dupree.
Again, my name is Jim Woodburn, Law Firm of Ray and Woodburn. I'm representing the authority in this transaction. Butler Snow is the bond counselor to this transaction. As Jason mentioned, this is purely for qualifying this bond to be a taxes exempt for IRS purposes. By governments, if you could issue bonds on a taxes exempt basis, which means lower interest rate, IRS allows for certain nonprofits and other types of projects to issue bonds on a non-tax exempt basis as well. Hospitals, nonprofits, senior living facilities, which is what this project's going to be. Let Skip Dupree can go through more details of what the project's going to entail. But IRS allows these types of projects to take advantage of taxes exempt bonds financing. But difference between this transaction and governmental taxes exempt bond transactions is the IRS requires two more things to happen. In particular, the company itself, the nonprofit entity can't issue the bonds itself, so they can't go up to a bank and get a loan directly from the bank. The IRS requires the bonds to be issued by a conduit issue for a government entity of some sort and that the proceeds to be loaned or to the company or leased, the project leased to the company. It also requires that the government that has jurisdiction over where the project's located do two things, something called a TEPRA approval, which is a public hearing, basically for anyone in the public within, in this case, Pauling County, can show up and ask questions about the project. That's what's going to happen tonight at 7:00 p.m. It also requires the Board of Commissioners of the jurisdiction to approve the issuance of the bonds. Again, these bonds are not an obligation of the county. They're going to be issued by the Industrial Building Authority, but it's limited obligation of the authority itself. It's secured solely by payments, in this case, lease payments, being made by the Dallas Memory Care, which is a company that will be operating this facility. It's no liability on the authority's part. County will not sign any documents, will have no obligations. The pledge taxes on the county's part and again, the bond order in this case will only look towards the company for repayment of these. Only reason we're going through the authority and getting y'all's group on tonight is purely for IRS purposes and basically to make these bonds taxes exempt and provide the benefit to the, to the company. Without all turnovers, Skip Dupree, you can go through what project to discuss.
All right. Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, my name is Skip Dupree and I'm here representing Dallas Memory Care. I also have local partners here today, Ed and Luper and Brad Carroll. Together, we're, we hope to build a 48-bed facility on the Atlanta Highway that will specialize in memory care. There's a tremendous need here as well across America for people that suffer from dementia, Alzheimer's, various forms of memory care. The beds have not kept pace with the need and we've commissioned a study. Pauling County is the third most underserved market for counties in Georgia. There's a tremendous need here and we're lucky to be here and we're going to tell you that we're going to place major emphasis, we're going to hire somewhere from 38 to 40 workers that will preferably be given to Dallas as well as Pauling County citizens and residents. Buying from local vendors, suppliers, it will be a priority also. This facility will be unlike any others. It would be old world style architecture, cutting edge colors, fabrics, act. It will be old-style architecture, cutting-edge colors, fabrics, activities, things that are today important for the person suffering from memory loss. We'll have two pods or neighborhoods, 24 units each. And in each neighborhood, they will have their own living units as well as dining facilities. And what it does, it encourages them to become acquainted with their neighbors. Each unit will have a mini kitchen, which will also qualify for the tax exemption. It will have various private chapels, physical therapy rooms, private dining, where if your family members come and they want to have a private dining with their loved one, they'll be able to have various administration offices also. But it's strictly for the memory care. We'll also have rooms that initially will be allocated and used for assisted living, the rest of the rooms for somebody that needs a short-term stay, whether it's orthopedic surgery. And we'll work with Wellstar also as far as referrals and placements and temporary people. We also have the rest that will be set up, furnished, and designed for the caretakers that need a three-day break. There's a lot of people that just try to keep their loved ones at home, and they're weak. This is 24/7 obligation to the caretaker. This way, they can get a three-day break. And sometimes, they turn out to be full-time residents after that break. So we're here, and we're glad to be here, and I love taking questions from the audience that should have concerns with this facility. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions, Skip. Nice to be in here. Over here.
Okay.
Other locations that you all may have built in?
This will be, I built with some other partners in Decatur, Alabama. I'm from Birmingham, but Decatur, Alabama, and Cullen, Alabama. But they were not designed like this. They had a mixture of assisted living, dedicated, as well as memory care. And when we got built, we sold the properties. We, this is the first of 10 facilities that we hope to build over the next few years in Georgia. And we chose Georgia because it's a very friendly state, and it's a tax exempt city as well. There's no certificate of need requirements here for beds that Alabama has. They have those. They're very limited as to how many beds in Alabama. We see a good opportunity to grow here in the state of Georgia.
You mentioned 38 to 40 employees for the 48 units. How many of those would be medical?
I would say probably 20 to 24, other than maintenance, kitchen, cooking, activity directors. We'll have 24/7 staff that consists of LPNs as well as RNs. We'll have a doctor on call that will negotiate with your loved one. And so we'll probably have maybe 20 or so, 24 LPNs or RNs.
Any other questions?
What do you think you're planning on being open if things work out?
We hope to probably finalize the bonding side of this sometime in December. Probably start sometime in February, back in March. It'll take about 12 months to be open once we start.
I think you're filling a great meeting we have here in Kirana County, so thank you very much. I keep with you. I got a question for you. Now, the bonds are actually settled in the Industrial Building Authority's name?
That's correct. That's correct.
But, and so they'll actually own the facility, and their recourse is to payment stream of...
Lease payments. So basically, the structure, the transaction structure is the authority will issue the bonds, bond proceeds will build the facility, they'll lease the facility to this company, and they'll give an option to purchase at the end in terms of the bonds. It's a limited recourse, a limited obligation of the authority. Basically, we're going to ask...
So it's a limited recourse, own the bond.
That's correct.
So their name is not actually... I mean, they're on it, but it's a non-recourse, a limited red.
Exactly.
Thank you very much. There's no executive session of public participation on non-agenda items under the law center without all the control.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ladies and gentlemen, and thank you, gentlemen. My dad fought the Second World War, and I lost my brother here. I'm here to talk about the Polton County Animal Shelter. And generally, I'm good at off-the-cuff speaking, but in order to say what I wanted to say, it's written, so I'm probably going to read most of this. Bear with me, please. Change for the animals under the protection of the Polton County Animal Shelter is slowly happening. It's a journey, and it begins with a single step, and that's been taken place, and we need to continue stepping. There are challenges that have been met and that are going to continue to be needed to be met. One challenge is to raise the level of care and welfare of the animals under the protection of the Polton County Animal Control, specifically utilizing preventive vaccinations and basic antibiotics. Change comes only through the collective action and effort by all parties. Polton County Commissioners, the veterinarian hired by Polton County, leadership of the animal control facility, the taxpaying public, and others. It's a community effort, and it's got to be a partnership. Education and commitment lead to change, but complacency and indifference perpetuate the status quo. The current method of handling treatable illnesses at Polton County is not working. I have fostered, and I have fostering right now, and fostering right now, some cats and kittens from Polton County. Every one of them always is sick, always. It's time for a change. Taxpayers want their money spent on life-saving treatments, not wasted on unnecessary killing. The current plan for pets with treatable illnesses is ineffective, inhumane, and it's a waste of tax dollars. It's time for a change. As members of society, we are the difference between life and death for these creatures. We need to recognize that animals are perceptive beings. They have emotions, feel pain, experience fear and happiness. It has been proven that companion animals are important in society. They share our homes. They share the homes of friends and relatives. Cats and kittens purr, dogs and puppies wag their tails as they show emotion. They can't be held responsible for their situation as being left astray outside of themselves or very often surrendered by the people they trusted. People who are irresponsible by not spaying or neutering are part of the problem, but not the excuse that should be used because there are too many animals and not enough room. This is a community effort. It has to start somewhere, and it really has to start here. Each of us make hundreds of choices every day, from something as simple, what are we going to have for breakfast, to more profound choices that impact our careers or relationships. Sometimes, one single choice not only changes the direction of our lives, but the lives of many, many others, animal and human. Market research shows that Americans spend over $750 million on their pets. I wonder how much of that money is spent here in Polton County? We've got Petsmart, Walmart, all these grocery stores, Tractor Supply. You've got, and I couldn't get an accurate count, because we don't have the old Yellow Pages that hard copy that you can read through, but there's between nine and 12 veterinarian clinics in the Polton County, probably between Hyrum and Dallas. That doesn't include surrounding areas that are close to the line. Polton County estimates that the current population is 152,000 people. I called yesterday, because the chamber got that, so I wanted to be up on that. The Polton County Economic Development website states that Polton County is the second fastest-growing county in both metro Atlanta and Georgia. On the City of Dallas, Georgia, website, it states that Polton County is one of the fastest-growing counties in the United States. I did see 11th written, and I didn't have any place to really go to substantiate that, but I did see that. If these are the facts and the statements are true, then I say, the world watches what we do here in Polton County. People are coming from Alabama and built here. People move here from other places, as did I. So I'm going to challenge this board to do its right for the animals in the Polton County Animal Control Facility. To begin with, I ask for utilizing preventive vaccinations and basic antibiotics for the animals, and I have a second thought here. Renovate the existing facility or build a new facility, or, and I don't know what's planned for this, but as I was driving here, you've got a vacated water, whatever, that's moved here. Probably looks like a fairly new building. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, thank you. I didn't get to read this, but thank you, thank you. I appreciate it. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think you can do it. Thank you.
That conducts our business. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion second, I'll have to say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for being here.